Well, this evening, we have, we have two items on our work session agenda. The first is a presentation and discussion on our strategic planning by consultant Brian Scott, who will present to us, and then after that, we will have a discussion on the economic plan, and Elliot of Community Attributes will present. So Brian, we'll call you up, and you can get us started. Again, welcome, Brian and Elliot. It's good to see you, and Tyrion, you're here, so it's good to have you three with us.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Brian Scott with BDS Planning and Urban Design. It's a pleasure to be here with you again this afternoon, and my, my task today is to give you an update on the strategic planning process and get your feedback on some key elements of that. We're going to touch about the mission and the values that we discussed earlier, and at some of the work sessions in the charrette that you've been to, we've discussed those. So you've been through those, and we're hoping for approval today. And then, we're going to share draft goals and objectives that were developed last week. So the task today, process update, hopefully approve the mission and values, and review the goals and objectives, maybe refine the goal language, and, and review the objectives, give some feedback and direction to the six work groups that are, are working on those currently. We've been through this many times, so I will just take a moment on it. This process, the strategic planning process has three parts. The first phase of who we are, the second phase, where we want to go, and the third phase, how we're going to get there. The, the first phase is, is complete. All, all the parts of that, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis, the vision, is still in progress. We're going to talk about that in a moment. The mission, the values, we're going to approve tonight, and strategic priorities are done. As you'll recall, we held a number of focus groups with an eclectic and diverse collection of McMinnville residents, facilitated myself, Gabriel, and Arturo, all worked on those focus groups. We had an online survey with a really robust turnout, and a situation assessment, which was a review by Echo Northwest of a number of city documents, and a survey of city department heads, and then we had a community charrette, where about 50 people came together and spent an afternoon working together, reviewing all of those things and outlining the strategic priorities that I'm going to share, and the goal, and, and setting up the, the process that I'm about to share, and most of you were there for that, so you'll remember that. We're now moving toward completion of Phase Two. The work on the issue work groups on goals and objectives is in progress, and here we are at the third council work session in this process. So the components of the strategic plan, just as a reminder of what we're trying to create to get to the finish line, it starts with a vision, mission, and values, and we're going to talk about those in just a moment. And then we identify areas of strategic priorities, and the last time I was with you, we affirmed those work areas, and we've been working in those work areas ever since. And then, in each strategic priority, we want to have a goal, and I'm going to share draft goal statements with you today, and then we want to have a handful of objectives under each goal, and then ultimately, specific action items and targets for each objective. Today, we're going to approve the mission and values, and we're going to discuss the goals and objectives. So the moving, just charging right ahead, moving into the vision, mission, values, we've discussed these more than once, and we reviewed draft purpose statements with you at an earlier meeting, and then we had a lively discussion at the charrette about part of those. And our sense of where we are in this is that people are pretty comfortable with the mission and the values, and we're not sure we've got the vision right yet. So Jeff's suggestion was, why don't we table the vision for the moment and circle back to it later on in the process? So I'm going to just suggest we kind of suspend that for the moment and let the process flush out a little more, and then recognize we haven't done it, and we need to finish it, but it's, it's, we're not really, we don't think we're ready for it tonight. So, on the mission, I'm not going to go through my whole little professorial lecture about what a mission statement is again, you all heard it before, and you all participated in a conversation about this. So this process is suggesting to you that a proposed update of the city of McMinnville's mission statement would be that the city of McMinnville delivers high-quality services in collaboration with partners for a prosperous, safe, and livable community. Comments, thoughts? Does that feel right? Jeff, did I miss anything in that sort of setup for this?
Has this been presented to the department heads? Do they feel good about it?
We have talked through this. I think the recommendation to put a pause on the vision work really reflects the input of the department directors as well. I think we felt like there seemed to be a fair amount of consensus, you know, could we rewrite it? Could we tweak it? Sure, you can wordsmith something until it's no longer meaningful, or we're all sick of it, but I think we felt like the mission and the values piece were pretty well done, and if the council was comfortable with them, we felt like the mission and values could help drive the rest of the process. We think that the vision can be informed by some of the goals and objectives work that Brian's going to talk about, and, and feel like making another probably single run at that with department directors and some key stakeholders, and then bring it back to the council one time during the summer, and we'll probably be done with that vision piece too.
I think it's simple and direct. I like it.
Yeah, if, if I remember, I think we put quite a little discussion into this of making sure we had the right words, and, you know, as we look at this, you know, high-quality, working with partners, the prosperous, safe, and wanting to keep that livable community, which is a buzzword that we feel really comfortable with. So I would agree. I, I like that mission statement. Other comments?
I also like it. I think it's very clear, and it has, but it has a lot of depth that really captures who we are and, and what we should be focusing on as a community. So I think, I think it's well done, succinct.
Alan, Sal, or Adam?
I definitely like it. I think it's a direct reflection of that day we spent over at the PD with all those community partners, and I'm happy with moving forward with it.
Any other comments?
Just one thing, pretty minor. So if you have, if you're on a mission, you're striving to do something, so if that's our mission statement, we've already delivered. In other words, it's McMinnville delivers already all this stuff, so where's the, where's the mission?
The mission, the, the vision is about where you're trying to go.
Right.
The mission is about who you are and what you do. And so this is trying to describe what we do, is we deliver high-quality services in this way.
Yeah, that's fine. Little thing.
Any further discussion? Are we to a, a point where we can agree and, and move forward? It looks like there's nods around the dais, so Brian, I think we've got that.
All right. Great. And then, moving forward into proposed values, we've also had a lively discussion about these that you all have participated in. We made some adjustments to these as we went forward, and I realize that just as I was typing today, I screwed up. I'm going to fix it right now, just so that it's, I just realized as I was, this is supposed to be equity and inclusion. So we, we've, we've made a few minor tweaks, mostly to the explanatory language that's here. The, the first draft of this was stewardship, inclusion, courage, and accountability. We made an adjustment to add equity to that one, and we reordered them in response to some of the things, and we spent some real time working on the explanatory statements. So the proposal here is that for external-facing values, we talked about having some internal values as well, which are a work in progress, but the proposed values would be stewardship. We are responsible caretakers of our shared public assets and resources. We do this to preserve the strong sense of community pride, which is a McMinnville trademark. Equity and inclusion. We are a compassionate and welcoming community for all. Different points of view will be respected. Because not all members of our community are equally able to access our services and participate in public process, we commit ourselves to lowering these barriers. Courage. We are a future-oriented, proactively embracing and planning for change that is good for our community and consistent with our values. And accountability. We believe in healthy civic discourse is fostered through responsive service and clear, accurate, useful information. And I think a lot of really hard work went into those refinements of that language, and personally, I think it's, it's really pretty strong. I think you liked stewardship right out of the gate, and that one didn't change too much. We worked hard on equity and inclusion and saying it wasn't just being, having the door open, but it was actually working proactively to help those that needed some extra boost to help, help it be equitable, as opposed to just equally available, was important, and it seemed like to everybody in the charrette, that was an important thing that ought to be there. First conversation about courage is it felt a little, it felt funny when it stuck there, but then I think the language about, we really are about change, and we know change is coming, and we're going to face it and embrace it and not resist it, was important. And then, holding yourselves accountable through good discourse and clear information, I think, was also really good value. So personally, I've been very impressed with the community's discussion of these, and so I put them forward to say, do we have this right?
So comments or questions?
Brian, I have one question. In the charrette that we had in the, at the police station, I think Peter from the hospital had said, suggested that we use innovation instead of courage. Was there any more discussion about that? I thought that was kind of an interesting.
He did, I remember him saying that, and...
Is there any further discussion on that?
I don't think there was any, I can't, I can't recall further discussion about it. He made the comment, and I remember it, people liked it, and it didn't come up again. So if, I don't, I don't, I can't think of a reason off the top of my head that that wouldn't be a well-received edit. Jeff, do you have a different memory of that?
Can I comment? I really, really like the word courage, because it does take a certain amount of courage and forthright vision to pursue and do a lot of this stuff. And even though I, innovation is certainly true, I still feel like that's a word that belongs there very strongly, but, you know.
And, and I think our, I think our citizens expect courage out of us to do the right thing. I, I think it, it conjures up a lot of internal feelings when you talk about courage, and there's courage in a lot of things, but it truly is, takes courage to stand up and do the right thing with a lot of voices hitting you at the same time of, no, go this way, go this way, or you ought not to do that. So from my perspective, courage really, at least emotionally, and I, it shouldn't be emotional, but it, it really hits the, internally for me. But completely open for comments more, if that's something that others would like to...
Mayor, go ahead. So I, I can speak to this a little bit, and I think, I think that the term courage came out from the focus groups, and that was something that we saw...
Yes, that's certainly true.
...and pretty consistently. And I took Peter's point. Sometimes it takes courage to do something that works and stick with it. And so I, I think innovation and process improvement and those kinds of things are really important, and I think those are tools that we use in this organization and will continue to use, but in terms of rising to that level of a really core value that drives a lot of the things that we do, I don't know that innovation fits that test. I think there are some things that we are innovative about, and that we could be more innovative about. I think there are some other things that we figured out about McMinnville that work pretty darn well, and, and innovation isn't, innovation isn't a lens through which we view every single thing that we do, but I think you can make an argument that courage, as it's defined here, probably does meet that test.
Okay.
Well put.
Yeah.
Any other comments? So, or...
Okay.
So we're good? We're going to stick with these as?
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with that. I thought it was an interesting comment, but those were good points, so.
Great. Thank you.
Down to accountability and...
Okay, so then moving into things that you haven't seen as much before unless you participated in the focus groups that were, or the, the work groups that were last week. We already identified six strategic priorities: growth and development, character, housing opportunities, economic prosperity, city government capacity, community safety and resiliency, engagement and inclusion, and civic leadership. And then, as I mentioned in the process, the next thing is to identify a goal for each of those, and some objectives. And the way that we've gone about this was to assign a strategic priority work group for each of these priority areas. The, the economic prosperity goal, we delegated to the economic development plan that you're going to hear about in a few minutes, so we didn't try to duplicate that work that's happening over there. But for the other six, we created a work group to meet several times, to go over the goals, objectives, actions, and targets for the strategic plan, one for each area. They were made up of department directors and managers, city staff, external partners. They eat, and here's a list of everybody that participated. I'm not going to read the whole list, but a whole lot of folks, both inside the city government and active community members were there, and each of these groups met last week on Monday or Tuesday. Gabriel, that many of you've all met, was here for both days and met with each of those six groups, and I have to say, I wasn't here. I just got the results as Gabriel presented them. They did a fabulous job of getting to the tasks they were supposed to do and identifying goals and draft objectives that I would like to share with you now.
And just one, one thing for clarification. The names that are listed were the folks that were invited. We had a couple of folks who, for a variety of reasons, couldn't attend. Each of the work groups is going to meet at least one more time, and we will continue to invite the full list of the folks that appear on this, on this sheet.
So in each approach, they spent a little time on the background, they worked on goals, they worked on objectives, and then they'll come back and, and work on specific actions in the weeks and months ahead. And so here are the goal statements, and I'm going to go into them in more detail and share the objectives, but I want to give you an introduction to the goals. So their, their proposed goal statements that came out of these six meetings last week was for growth and development, character. Guide growth responsively and responsi, responsively and responsibly to enhance our unique character. For housing opportunities, create diverse housing opportunities to support great neighborhoods. Economic prosperity is coming from the other plan. City government capacity. A proactive organization with a clear and shared understanding of the city's core lines of business, which direct investment in its people. Organizational infrastructure and partnerships. Community safety and resiliency. Proactively and responsively develop and maintain a safe and resilient community. Engagement and inclusion. Creating a culture of acceptance and mutual respect, which willingly acknowledges and overcomes differences. And civic leadership. Embracing a variety of leadership development opportunities to foster a culture of civic pride and involvement. So there's an overview of, of those objectives. I want to run, or of the goals, and I want to walk you through the objectives they're proposing, and then I'll put this slide back up so we can visit about them, but I want to show you what's underneath them before we get into that conversation. So beginning, and again, the, the task today is to give some approval or, or refinement of the goal statements, and then anything you want to say about the objectives, we'll take notes on and kind of give some feedback to the groups, but they're not done. So growth and development, character, I described the goal. Three objectives came out of that about defining the unique character, infrastructure services and to guide growth, and open and inclusive public engagement. Defining the unique character of a community process that articulates core principles. Prioritize continuous evaluation and planning for infrastructure and services to guide growth. And establish and sustain open, inclusive public engagement at all stages of the planning and implementation process. So you can see the three sort of key elements that make up that growth and development, character, goal. Housing opportunities won the prize for the most objectives relating to planning and forecasting, housing affordability, regulatory frameworks and land supply, financial feasibility of housing development, building permits, the construction workforce, and being a clearinghouse. Conducting thorough and timely planning and forecasting on things such as buildable lands, housing needs, housing strategy, and the urban growth boundary. Promote housing affordability through diversifying the available typologies. Ensuring regulatory frameworks and land supply align with market-driven housing needs. This is from the economic development strategy that's happening in parallel. You'll hear more about that shortly. Collaborate to improve the financial feasibility of housing development and new home purchases, also from the economic development strategy. New building permits should be in alignment with forecasted growth. Develop the construction workforce by investing in and leveraging great local educational institutions and mentoring new local developers, and providing a coordinated resource clearinghouse for those seeking housing financial assistance. Economic development, again, will come from the other process. City government capacity. Identify and clarify core lines of business and ground truth with the public. Proactively plan for knowledge transfer and succession planning of staff. Gain efficiencies from one-time technology investments, and recruit and retain talented people. I know a lot of, a lot of thought and work went into this one, and there's been a lot of thought about the knowledge transfer and succession planning as a key issue. Community safety and resiliency, the most succinct perhaps. Lead in emergency preparedness, ensuring safe infrastructure and surroundings. Provide exceptional police, fire, and emergency medical services, and build community culture of safety. Engagement and inclusion. Improving access by identifying and removing barriers to participation. Ensuring safety from discrimination and harassment for all. Cultivate cultural competency and fluency throughout the community. Celebrate diversity in McMinnville. Grow the city's labor force and boards and commissions to reflect our diverse community. And finally, civic leadership. Attract and develop future leaders. Identify, assess, and mitigate barriers to civic leadership. Support civic education at the local and county level, and recognize and raise up leadership in all of its forms. So as you can see, they did a ton of work in those work groups last week, and putting forward to you for your comment and refinement, these goal statements at the top level, and then any thoughts you had as I was blowing through the objectives, happy to hear. They're going to get together and work on those some more in the next few weeks.
Thank you, Brian. Comments or questions of Brian or among ourselves?
Can you go back to the previous slide, please? On economic development in three and four, can you just open up the four?
I'm sorry, councillor, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Four, can you open up four, please?
Back, that one.
What did, on the first point, identify and clarify core lines of business and ground truth with the public? What exactly does that mean?
My, my reading of that is to be, to clarify what it is that the city's key practices, what is it the city does, and then make sure that the, the McMinnville's highly-engaged public is in agreement that that's what the city should be doing, and checking that out. That's how I, I read that. Maybe there are people in the room that were in that focus group that...
Susan was in that focus group. Did you have something you want to add, Susan?
No, I think that was it. Just making sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing and not doing things that we're not supposed to be doing, and that we all agree on that. It was kind of, that was the baseline we wanted to make sure we understood.
It's, it's not unusual for us to get an ask from the audience, like in an open session, and some of it has directly to do with the school or with a situation that the city has no financial or any other responsibility for, and they expect the city to do it. They come here and ask us for it. And, you know, it's, it's to, I think the idea is to let people understand more clearly what the city actually does do and what our mission is.
You know, sometimes we've talked about doing a better job of telling our story, but this goes even further than that, and it's making sure that we're in alignment with those that we've asked, and the, our participants and partners, is what I get from that.
I think it's good. I guess my comment would be that that seems a little opaque. I like the sentiment behind it, but...
So it could be, it could be more clearly written.
Yes, and then the other comment that I had was on the word typology and economic development.
I think that was on housing opportunities.
Housing opportunities, thank you.
Yes.
I just thought that, that maybe that could be simplified a little bit. Take, take the language down to maybe a third, third or fourth grade level. The only two suggestions. I think it's great, by the way. I think it's all very good work.
And under housing opportunities, I, I know a part of our economic strategies talk about housing opportunities and how that's going to help fuel some of our economic development. I just want to make sure that, that the goals found here correspond with the goals that are found in the economic strategy. So we ought to be looking at both of those and making sure that we don't have any loose wires a little bit that we can get a little spark in.
And one of the things we did to try to be intentional is Heather represented the executive team on this group, and she's the project lead on the economic strategy. So it doesn't all fall on Heather, but Heather is carrying some of that weight to make sure that we're not at cross purposes and things are accurately reflected.
We are sharing documents back and forth between the two teams, and Gabriel actually brought a lot of the information from the economic development strategy into the two work groups that I was working with, so I know he did with the other ones as well, to show that cross-connection.
Yeah, actually, one thing I was struck by is when, when the report from the community engagement on the economic development strategy came out, and I read it, I was, it was like, did we write this? It felt, it was very clear that they were talking to the same community that we were, you know, and that was actually, I was very heartened, and Elliot and I were just connected. It would have been a problem if it came out really different, but it actually was very reinforcing that it was so similar.
The, the, sorry, Mayor. Oh, thank you. The one comment I'd make, and to Heather, since you're on both work groups, is that, and I, I know you're in agreement with this, that I think the biggest challenge we have over the next decade or, or so, is matching the economic opportunities that we have in this community, the kinds of jobs that are being created, to the kinds of housing opportunities, the kind, the kind of housing that's available. Because I think right now, we have a situation where the housing is not affordable for the kinds of jobs that are going to, that are being created and that will be created in the near future. So to me, our challenge over the next decade is getting those two things into alignment.
Yeah, councillor, and if I could respond to the typology comment, that actually was a, a pretty lengthy discussion amongst the work group, and the reason why they landed on, on the word typology was a lot of people think to build affordable housing, you need to build a certain product, either, you know, a multifamily complex with rentals in it, or... Either, you know, a multifamily complex with rentals in it, or a small lot, small home development. And there's a way to think about the different types of home products respond to all different types of incomes and generation, generations in different ways. And if we, in our mind, are just slotting certain types into certain types of demographic groups, we're not serving our community well. And so that's why they felt typology was important to have in that.
I think it was an accurate term, but I wonder if, if you need to use typology and if instead types wouldn't be just as accurate and yet more easily understood.
You're suggesting promote housing affordability through diversifying the available housing types?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, I just think generally, when you have a big word and a, and a small word that means the same thing, pick the small one because it's just easier for people as a rule of thumb. Not that it's a big deal.
Any other comments?
So my, my, one overarching question I would ask is, if we finish this work and we refine these objectives, these are our goals, and we have action strategies and performance measures for those things, will you feel like you have a strategic plan? Or assume that's, I guess that's the question is, because this pretty much becomes what the structure of that whole thing will look like, and we'll get a little deeper, but this is where we're going to get deep.
It's, it's the items I think we've been struggling and talking about as a council for a while. And, you know, I, I try to paint the picture is we're putting, we're putting the, at a bowling alley, we're putting the barriers up so that we don't drop, jump from lane to lane. It keeps us down that, that path. And, and, you know, I, I looked really carefully and I did some introspective type of thinking of saying, is this the things that possibly keep us up at night? And so many of those were the things that we put time and energy in. And, you know, I think it's going to give us a bit of direction, but then we're going to have to break it down to bite-sized pieces because this is a 20-year plan that's not going to be done yet, next year, but we can put priorities to. Do you feel the same way?
I think generally, yes. I, I think it's going to be a lot deeper, but yeah. I think this is a good framework to start with.
I agree. I think it covers the, the major areas that we're going to need to work within. And I'm looking forward to seeing some of the bite-sized pieces because it's dense. I mean, there's, but it's very comprehensive and I don't, I don't see anything that's been missed, so.
I agree. That's a good, good list.
Okay. Mayor, so one of the things that I, I challenged the city government capacity workgroup to do is to get a little bit tighter with the goal. And when I just look at it, it's about twice the length of all the other goals. And I don't think it's because the people in that room, there were twice as many people and it's a words per person kind of thing. But I, I think I would, I would want to challenge the group to see if they could tighten that up a little bit. I think a good goal is something that people can easily remember and memorize if, if pressed. So I think that one's a little long. And the, the other thing, we didn't ask for this to happen, all of the other goals start with a very action-oriented word, and that one doesn't. And so I think I would, I would press that group to try to refine that language a little bit and to, and to figure out what's the most important action that ought to be associated with that goal. I, I think they could do that and it won't substantively change the content there. And maybe we end up with the same number of words and they're arranged a little bit differently, but I might, I might push that workgroup to think about it in that.
All right.
I see Susan bobbing her head. Did that, did that kind of conversation happen around the room or what was your sense?
We really agree with the discussion and did not land on the wording at the end, but I know we didn't intend for it to look like this when it was on the screen. And I think if we get a second back at it, we'll do that. It didn't feel this long when we were talking about it, but we just really got, we got all these things together at the last minute trying to put the words down in a sentence that made sense. But we have a lot of good energy and then we'll, we'll be able to do that.
Any other comments? With those additions, Brian, I think as a draft, we can move forward.
Great. So my last slide, so the next step is the workgroups will reconvene beginning in June to finalize goals and objectives and begin work on action plans and performance metrics. The leadership team will come together a few more times to work on the overall plan structure and the first year implementation strategy. And then we'll be back to council with the full plan for adoption in a few months. So that's where we are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
For those on the council, I think Heather had shown, sent out this slide presentation, so you can bring it up under an email from Heather this afternoon to follow Elliot's presentation.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you all for having me. Very glad to be here. And thank you, Brian, as well for introducing us to the content. I think it should be very clear by now that there's a lot of overlap because we've heard from a lot of the same people, a lot of good ideas coming through this process. Our process sort of slots into that larger strategic planning process. And as a result, we may have some language hierarchically speaking about goals and strategies that, you know, we're still working on aligning with Brian's process, but we think there will be a lot of similar themes and we hope that ours really integrates well into theirs that we're expressing things that are important to the community, but doing so in a way that's consistent with the community's values in a more broad sense. So, the way I wanted to structure this conversation tonight was to overview our project process as it slots into the larger strategic plan, to summarize some of the work that we've done to date, which was in your council packet. We've got key findings from a data profile and also from a SWOT analysis that we conducted separately for the economic prosperity goal area. And then to review the draft strategic framework and the working draft strategies that we have for economic prosperity or economic development. And that's where I really think we can have a robust discussion. We'd look for as much input as you're able to give tonight so that we can move forward with that working draft and come up with a second draft for the advise, excuse me, advisory committee we've been working with to go back and grapple with some more. So we're in the midst of this process and just looking for some additional direction from you all this evening to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. So just to discuss the process a little bit, I mentioned the advisory committee. We've been meeting monthly with an advisory committee with Heather's help. We've had four meetings completed to date. We began in February. We've got another meeting coming up here in the next week. And we'll anticipate meeting through July, at which point we'll come back and see you and hopefully have a full plan in place that everyone feels good about. We began our efforts not just with those meetings, but also with doing some digging in terms of the, the data to identify some of the community characteristics, trends, both societally and explicitly economically, key industries and things of that nature. We also did a pretty good city tour to get to know you as a community in a physical sense. We did some robust focus groups with industry stakeholders, four of them. Almost 20 people participated across those four groups, representing manufacturing, software development, financial services, education, agriculture, wine, tourism, hospitality and other industries. And we grouped them into industry groups that we, we think had some similarities, but also had enough diversity to create a really fruitful conversation, I think. And we learned a lot from those focus groups. And I think that that is really reflected in the draft strategy that you'll see this evening. We've had one, well now two, public open houses. We had our second last night. So, those have also been really good conversations that have helped us hone, hone in on strategic directions for the community. And then we developed instead of, and it's, instead of a survey, an online idea map. It was a, a map-based public comment tool that anyone in the community could access through not only the city's website, but a number of partner organizations' websites, geolocate their comments according to theme or topic, and let us know, you know, we think this should be done here, or we think this is an opportunity for X, Y or Z. And so that's another source of information that we have used in coming to this draft In April, we began taking what we learned in February and March and, and morphing it into this strategic framework, but we also completed a SWOT analysis to summarize what we had heard. You'll see findings from both of those tonight. In May, we submitted the draft strategy for your review as well as the advisory committee's review. We've received an initial round of comments from the advisory committee, but we haven't taken a second stab at the strategy yet, so we're very much at an interim working draft point on that strategic framework and, and the draft action steps underneath it. We just had our open house, as I mentioned, last night. This is the first time we're working with you all as a council and we're happy to be here. As I mentioned before, we'll be back in early July to meet with you again. So in June and July, and these are our next steps, we're really in a revision process, trying to make sure we're headed in the right direction, get the language right, and come back for approval of the economic development strategic plan or the economic prosperity arm of the larger citywide strategic plan. Any questions or comments about the process and how we all fit into the larger strategic planning effort? All right. So I included a few images here just to kind of show you in tangible terms what we've been doing. The pictures on the upper half of this slide are from our first open house with the public and we received a lot of good comments. We presented some initial findings in the data profile. You see some charts and graphs there, as well as a close-up on the lower left-hand side of some of the data that we provided. That was all also included in your packet. So just to show that we're sharing with the community some of the data that we're finding to sort of ground truth some of the anecdotal evidence that we also hear when we're talking to people out in these meetings. On the very lower left, we have a small snapshot of that online comment tool I mentioned. We received over 100 comments there and most all of them were extremely actionable items. One of the benefits of having a map-based tool, right, is that people can, can hone in on sites that they know very well, places that they may walk by every day or drive by every day. So that was really useful, particularly in identifying what some of the action items might be that sort of nest underneath these larger and broader strategies or goals. Really helps us tap into the community in a, a different way than maybe what you get in a public meeting. And then just an image from our walking tour, a walking tour I can happily report to have continued this morning, just continuing to get to know the community better and better. Snapshot from the data profile, again, this was included in your packet and we'll talk through key findings of it. I'm happy to discuss data sources, methods, findings, any of that in greater detail. But you can see here some of the data that we collected. The data profile in its entirety was about 40 slides worth of content sourced from state sources, local sources and national sources such as the Census Bureau or the BLS, Bureau of Labor Statistics. So launching into the key findings, some of these will be obvious to you all, but it was good for us to get ramped up and get to know the community. McMinnville is the largest population and highest employment city in Yamhill County. It is a regional center at a countywide level and a subregional center in a larger context. And it is growing quite rapidly. The forecast data suggests that you'll add somewhere in the neighborhood of 20,000 people over the coming decades. And growth trends may continue after that to add even more people. One thing we did note in the data is that most people are actually coming from within Yamhill County or within the state of Oregon. So they're not necessarily moving from outside the state. And we had heard various things coming in that maybe they were coming from a wider draw, that there were people moving from other parts of the country or even outside the country here. But the, the data show that in comparison to other communities, you're actually getting a pretty good draw from within the county. A lot of it is probably urbanization from more rural parts of the community or smaller towns here within Yamhill County. The population in Yamhill County is aging. That should come as no surprise because it is a national trend, but it will affect the composition of McMinnville's population over the coming decades. And that obviously has economic implications for you to plan proactively for. Now, McMinnville in particular, Yamhill County, as far as industry bases are concerned, is, I think, associated broadly with wine and tourism, but we were surprised and pleased to see that McMinnville actually has a very diversified economic base. In many cases, you have industry sectors that account for, say, between eight and 15% of total employment. You have multiple of them, which shows some diversity in the economy. You've still got some strong employers in manufacturing. You've got strong employers in education and medicine. And this shows that really you're not a monoculture, you're not just a tourism-based economy. You have some diversity there that's a real value or a real asset from an economic development standpoint. That being said, one of the industry sectors that was lower than in comparison communities, again, may come as no surprise, is office-using employment. That's a broader term that we use to encompass multiple related sectors such as professional and business services, financial activities and information. But those sectors all typically do consume office space in a physical sense, and they are lower than in comparison communities as a percentage of total employment.
Could you just briefly explain to me the significance of this? Are you saying these are higher-paying jobs usually or...?
They can be. Oftentimes they are. Certainly it depends on the, the sectors or subsectors we're talking about. And then not all office-using employment is created equal. But if we are accepting that balance in the economy is good, and typically that is considered to be good because it invites resiliency into the economy, right? When one sector is adversely affected by macroeconomic or microeconomic trends, other sectors may be buoyed by local conditions, then we would expect to see a little bit higher office-using employment, just to, to ensure that that balance continues. So, median household income is low. It is increasing, which is a good thing, of course. And other economic attributes such as unemployment and poverty rates are also decreasing, which is very good. However, the median household income still remains lower than the statewide average. The unemployment rate, that being said, has now dipped below the statewide average, which is a great sign. You know, we've drawn on multiple data sources here and we'll talk a little bit more about this, I presume, because it did come up last night. But, you know, your poverty rate according to the Census Bureau is still quite high. Your unemployment rate according to the Census Bureau is still quite high, but their survey methodologies span a number of years. Department of Employment in Oregon has more recent data that shows that you're actually below the statewide average in unemployment rate. So definitely some positive signs there, but also areas that probably need some continuing work or still represent challenges for the local economy. Most McMinnville residents commute to work alone in a car. That's not abnormal for smaller towns or places where there are large job centers that are a little bit further away. Nevertheless, it's important for you all to plan for because you can think about how people can move more efficiently through the community and the region. And also, that affects your infrastructure investments. The most common commute destinations for McMinnville residents are Portland and Salem, but only 12% of total residents, according to the census data, currently commute to either one or the other. A lower percentage of McMinnville residents currently obtain a bachelor's degree or higher. So by that metric, educational attainment does lag for McMinnville residents compared to other communities in the region. However, one thing that we brought up last night is that McMinnville actually does a really good job of getting kids through high school. So that's a different metric of educational attainment. And we looked at 10 or 11 different comparison communities, some in Oregon, others throughout the western United States. I think we included Petaluma, California, Bozeman, Montana, Walla Walla, Washington, in addition to some of these other Oregon communities. And McMinnville either had the lowest or near the lowest portion of kids who did not complete high school. So it was actually doing very well by one metric of educational attainment. It's just not graduating kids with four-year degrees or higher at the rate that some of these other communities are.
Could there be a correlation between that and the median household income being a bit lower?
There is absolutely a correlation. It's difficult to isolate causation from the data, of course. But, excuse me, one thing that we did find in the data, and it's included in the data profile that was in your packet, was that median income goes up and poverty rate goes down as you attain higher and higher levels of education. So, we had a very robust conversation last night about the role for education in trades and that there are extremely good career pathways in trades. And we've heard through our focus groups and through other stakeholder conversations that the folks in traditional industry, business leaders in traditional industry around here who really value trade-based occupations, have a drastic shortage in available labor right now. And so, that certainly is something to be encouraged. I think that's a career pathway that has a place within your economic strategy without a doubt. But at the same time, not all trade-based occupations end up achieving the higher incomes that I think you'd like to see or the living wages that you'd like to see. And so it's about finding a comprehensive... you'd like to see. And so it's about finding a comprehensive strategy to get the kids who want to go to college and who are motivated to do so aligned with those opportunities, but also to find the best possible opportunities for those who don't feel like college is the best plan for them. And McMinnville is well-positioned to do that because it has a lot of industrial employers who are looking to pay good wages to motivated individuals with the right soft skills. I expect we'll continue that conversation as we get into the strategies. It was definitely something that we talked about quite a bit last night.
I have a question. To what extent do you have the data points to know whether or not the, even though the college attainment level for residents of McMinnville is lower than, say, in surrounding communities, to what extent is that a function of kids who maybe graduate from a local high school, go to college somewhere else, and stay somewhere else? Do you have any way of measuring that?
Well, we looked at the data a couple of different ways, and it helps answer that question. It's probably not a complete answer to that question, but when the Census Bureau surveys folks to see how many of them have achieved a bachelor's degree or higher, they're only looking at the population aged 25 or older. So they exclude anybody under the age of 25, figuring under that age, it's difficult to have achieved a bachelor's degree already, which means that when we say X percentage of people 25 and older in McMinnville with a bachelor's degree or higher is lower than in other communities, you may be suffering a little bit from the fact that kids from McMinnville are getting degrees elsewhere and haven't come back to town yet.
Or go somewhere else for employment that matches their degree.
Right. So after college, they stay somewhere else. That being said, and I think this is reflected in the data, right, you're doing a good job with getting kids through high school. That's looking at a different age range, a different population. It's actually looking at, I think, it's either 16-plus or 18-plus. I'd have to double-check to be sure, but the bottom line is the population it's looking at is a larger accounting of your actual residents, right? It takes into account folks who would be staying here after high school, even if they're not going to school somewhere else.
Thank you.
So I think the only one on this slide that we've not talked about a little bit here is housing affordability. Obviously, we heard from all of the stakeholders who have participated, or from many of the stakeholders who have participated, that it is a challenge here, that maybe there are not a wealth of housing options that are priced to align with the wages that are being paid here. And I think that's absolutely a reality. That being said, the data we found shows housing affordability as a regional issue and not just a local issue, right? Other communities in Oregon, and particularly in this part of Oregon, are struggling with housing affordability, and so part of that is doing what you can locally, probably to alleviate those challenges. And Brian alluded to some of the things that you may consider as strategies in terms of broadening the array of housing types that are available here. Obviously, as a comprehensive economic development strategy, we'd hope that we're also bringing more living wage jobs here that allow people to afford the types of housing that are available in McMinnville and that people want to be living in, but there's also a regional perspective on this issue here, where McMinnville may not be able to provide a housing unit to every single person who works in McMinnville. And so what are the regional solutions to affordable housing? And that's something, as we get into the strategies, the draft strategies here, we think is an important point to consider.
Elliot, I think I was reading in some of your material, regionally, in that we are in a very fertile agricultural area that puts some constraint on growing our inventory of land, becomes a challenge. And so regionally, that's one of the things that I think regionally we're trying to deal with, is having tier-one lands and not being able to grow our UGB, and then it lifts the price of existing inventory to a point that you're paying very high amounts just for the land as compared, and then building on top of that, it just incrementally takes it higher. Did I read that right?
Yeah, and some of this is coming from, I would say, anecdotal perspectives in the focus groups, but I think that in broad brushstrokes, there's a lot of truth there. I mean, UGB expansion is not an easy issue really for any community in Oregon. It's particularly tough for communities where the agricultural land on the outskirts is very valuable, and you're clearly in that situation now where the agricultural land is some of the highest value land in the country by productivity measures. So if you expand your UGB and you have all the regulatory blessings to do so, that's potentially undercutting productive agricultural lands, which are one of your economic bases. It's just a tension, right? And if it doesn't make sense then to expand onto some of the more productive agricultural lands, which for a lot of crops tend to be the more gently-sloped or topographically less challenging parcels, then that forces construction for buildings, particularly for houses, onto steeper slopes or places that are otherwise more difficult to build on, which increases the developer's costs, which often get passed on to the consumer. So that won't hold true in every single case, right? You'll find housing developments that aren't structured the same way. You'll find agricultural land that maybe makes more sense to expand upon. On a case-by-case basis, you won't find that to be true every time, but again, in broad brushstrokes, land constraints are probably more challenging here than they are in most communities.
Thank you.
Can you, one of the comments that you made that I really thought was interesting last night, and with regards to this, our constrained UGB, was the working with the neighboring communities to try to meet that. Can you talk just a little bit about what the discussions were around that, like in what way there was, they were talking about working with the neighboring communities proactively? I like the idea of that because it broadens the conversation, right?
Right.
How do we make it affordable for people to come here and work here, even with a constrained, you know, UGB?
Right.
To other communities.
Yeah, it came up in a number of our focus groups. I would say, you know, you may be getting to a point where a regional perspective is not just beneficial but necessary, particularly for issues of affordable housing. McMinnville can be everything for a lot of people, but it might not be able to be everything for everyone. And if McMinnville can provide good jobs for a certain segment of the population that still can't find housing here, it may be reasonable then for McMinnville to start to look to strengthen other communities that are within a reasonable distance so that people can find housing there as well that is more price-competitive. That's certainly not to say that McMinnville shouldn't be doing what it can to house the people who work here. There are efficiencies to be gained on a lot of levels in having people live where they work, broadly speaking, but, you know, as you grow and as you deal with the impacts that come from growth, I think the regional perspective gets more and more necessary. You know, that's true of any urbanizing area. That's true of any growing area. A regional framework gets more and more important the bigger you get. So, you know, there will come a point where if you can't expand rapidly enough to accommodate the growth that is coming this direction, and you still want to be proactive about that growth, then you can start communicating and coordinating with other communities in a 10-, 15-mile radius, whatever that radius is that's appropriate, to make sure that they're doing what they can to achieve some of the same shared goals, regionally speaking.
That's great.
Can you just, in a real short sentence, characterize the nature of the in-migration? Like, if, you know, if there's three or four population categories, retirees, migrant workers, I mean, what categories of people are coming into the community?
Well, and Heather, you're privy to some data that maybe I've not seen, but last night Heather shared a fact, a data point that she had seen, the 20-something demographic is the only one that's not actually increasing in absolute population in McMinnville, which means every other demographic is. What we're seeing in terms of percentage of total residents is that every demographic other than 65-plus is actually decreasing. So you may have absolute increases in most demographic segments, but in terms of share of population, you're an aging community that's going to continue to see the share of residents 65 and older taking up a larger and larger portion.
Where I was getting at with that question is that, that's my sense as well, but I'm not, it's unclear to me whether the degree to which that's the result of just an aging population versus in-migration, because it seems to me that the category of people that can afford the houses in McMinnville are mostly retirees, the ones that seem to be coming in. And I'm wondering how that can factor into our economic development strategy, because there's not a lot of industrial sectors that cater to low education workforces and yet have high-wage jobs, but healthcare is one of them. And so if we have a large in-migration of retirees, then it seems to me that would be one of the growth sectors we could be encouraging.
Yeah, it's a great point, and we have, again, we'll see as we get through the presentation, broken out our draft strategies into foundational strategies or foundational goals, really. Again, we'll have to work to align the terminology a little bit with the larger strategic plan, but the foundational goals, as we have defined them, are sort of broadly intended to benefit all industries in McMinnville. And then we have target sector goals, and one of those target sector goals is your sort of traditional eds. and meds. It's education, medicine, and other sciences. So we think that's absolutely a place where you've got a regional anchor already that brings in people from outside of McMinnville in the medical center, but also you've got population trends that favor that industry and give you an opportunity to grow in that sector. So I think that's absolutely right.
So if I can just follow up on that. So PSU did a coordinated population forecast for this area and looked at past trends and forecasted that forward. They also did in-migration rates, which I think is what council you're talking about, and they've crafted, I'll send to you what those graphs are, but essentially, and they went into Yamhill County. They didn't go down to the specifics of McMinnville. So what's happening in Newburgh versus McMinnville and the smaller communities is something we'd have to divide up from there. But the two large hits for in-migration into Yamhill County are the population groups between the age of 34 to 44 and 5 to 19. And so their summation from that was, it was a lot of families who are perhaps looking for their second home and a place to put their kids in a school program or grow their family type of thing. And it's an anomaly because it's not following the state trends. Then they also show that the one population group that dips below the line, and dips very much below the line, is the population group of 25 to 29. So not only are we not attracting that age group for in-migration, but they're leaving, and that is not the case for the state of Oregon as a trend either. So those are the sort of blips on the screen that they cautioned us to be aware of. The population's aging, so over the next 50 years, it is expected that the population will age, you know, as the baby boomers age into the next generation. The graphs show all that as well, but still concurrently today, we are still a relatively young community. Our average age is 34.5.
Compared to about 37 or 38 statewide.
Yeah, that was an interesting statistic when I saw that. We were at a much lower age bracket than our region all around us, so.
Any other questions about findings in the data profile, whether it was on these slides or in your materials? Happy to take either. All right. I'll move on. We can always come back, of course. We did sort of an economics focus or an economic development focus, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis, a SWOT analysis, and I've summarized a lot of what we heard here. This synthesizes the findings, not just from the data profile, but also from the focus groups that we conducted and any other means of outreach. So the IDA map, the first public formum, we think that, at least in terms of what we've heard, the strengths here are a high quality of life, which is not just valuable to your residents, but also something that you can use to attract investment and go out and get noticed for. You have a strong and widely-recognized downtown that's valuable in a similar vein, both as an amenity in terms of lifestyle, but also something that gets you recognized in a wider realm. You have a robust wine and tourism economy, as well as cultural and recreational amenities that bring visitors. One of the largest such amenities is the Air and Space Museum, but of course, you have art galleries and other cultural amenities that bring people to town. You are well-known regionally and nationally as a destination for wine and food, with other supporting tourist assets as well, other leisure activities as well as recreational activities. You have balanced employment across industry sectors. We talked about that a little bit in the data profile summary. You know, that balance is a key asset because it makes your economy more resilient. It's also just creating an environment where innovation is more readily accessible because you have cross-pollination between different industry groups. So in, again, broad brushstrokes, that's a key attribute of a healthy economy. You have the presence of post-secondary institutions that is maybe not unprecedented, but very, very good for a town of this size to have a four-year liberal arts college, as well as a community college, is a tremendous asset. You have inherent location advantages, being in good proximity to a major metro that offers real urban infrastructure, such as an international airport, good access, potentially better in the long-term future access to interstate highways and things like that, but the bottom line is, you know, you're 40, 45 minutes on a good day from Portland, and that's something that you can certainly leverage. At the same time, you've maintained a small-town character that a lot of places that are 40 minutes outside of a city of nearly 3 million people don't have, and so that is kind of having both sides of the coin in a way, right? You've got what many communities who are close to those infrastructural advantages and assets don't have. You also have high-quality soils, a climate that's suited for agriculture, and other environmental assets, such as your proximity to the mountains and the ocean. I mean, we talked about that quite a bit last night as well. There are very few communities that have both, in the way that you have both. You know, an hour, hour and a half from each is something you can certainly leverage. Inexpensive power and water, that came up in almost every single focus group, the presence of Mack Power and Light's tremendous asset and makes many industries more feasible in terms of growth. Major infrastructure assets, we've already alluded to. The ones that we hadn't mentioned were access to freight rail, which many people think is also an opportunity and can be better leveraged, but you've got the infrastructure in place for the most part, and a regional airport that's extremely competitive, if not actively out-competing other airports of similar size or in communities of similar size. And something that we heard that was very nice to hear, because we don't hear it all that often in small towns, is that you have positive business-climate perceptions. The people who are doing business with the city through permitting and other avenues have generally spoken very well of the process and think that the city is good to work with as compared to their business in other places. The weaknesses, many of which come in the data profile, so we've already sort of talked about relatively low educational attainment, particularly in higher education, a limited labor pool for local companies. It was even described by some folks in traditional industry as being at crisis level for trades-oriented occupations.
Elliot, can I just stop for a second under that?
Yes, of course.
You know, we talked a moment ago about the high level of unemployment being higher than our surrounding and some of our peer, but then we look at that limited labor pool for local companies, looking, you know, there's the two ends. You're looking at the higher end for relocation, but as I'm out and about, there are a number of jobs that are labor-oriented jobs where you could pick up a job any day just by going in. They've got the sign out all the time. Any thoughts on those two statistics and the story that it tells?
Well, your point is well-taken. There are some economic metrics, particularly, I would say, median household income and poverty rate, that don't necessarily tell the same story that some of these other stories of economic success would. You know, your balanced industry sectors in terms of their representation and things like that. Unemployment rate has been a tricky one to pin down because a lot of data sources, such as the census, still have it quite high, but actually, the most recent figures from the state of Oregon show that it's quite low. So this was something Heather and I were just discussing as recently as a couple of weeks ago. The Census Bureau in 2016, which is the most recent data they've released from the American Community Survey, has a five-year survey period, and they still had your unemployment rate around 10%. Actually, the state of Oregon says that the statewide average is a little over 4, and McMinnville's unemployment rate's at 3.6% or 3.8% now. So if the most recent data from the state of Oregon is to be believed, then you've got lower unemployment than the statewide average, and you've got a positive trend in that area.
Okay, good.
I think, going back to what you were talking about earlier, about trade jobs and things like that, perhaps accessing the high school earlier or, you know, somehow getting our access and letting students realize, because in many situations, I know there's a number of jobs with water and light where they could come into a very high-paying job, you know, if they're just able to show up on time and do the work, you know, and they'll be trained there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have any more insight into these, both of these questions that the mayor and Kelly have asked? Because I'm perplexed by it, because we have, although we have a low education attainment for college attainment, as you pointed out, we have a relatively high high-school graduation rate. My impression is that the vocational training programs in the area are pretty good, both in McMinnville and some of the surrounding. the area are pretty good, both in McMinnville and some of the surrounding communities. So, based on not only what you've seen in this community, but other communities that you've been to, where's the disconnect here? Do you have any insights into what the disconnect might be?
Yeah, I mean, it could be a range of things. Some of what we're suggesting in this draft strategy is to keep taking measures to hone in on the specific causes, because the data sort of operates at a macro level that makes it tough to identify perfect causation, right? But I think there is probably some lack of connectivity between career pathways and educational institutions, be that at the high-school level, community college level, or even at the four-year college level. There are job opportunities in McMinnville, and particularly job opportunities in McMinnville that could pay higher wages for somebody, at least that sticks with it for a few years, that maybe students aren't aware of, and I think that's one area within the strategy that we'll really look to focus. I also think that if the quality of life amenities, and that's a subjective term, right, everyone defines quality of life differently, but for recent grads, for young people, if the quality of life amenities aren't in place necessarily, then they, especially the most employable ones, may be taking their skills elsewhere, and so you are left with a population who is not as well-prepared for the workforce, even if your graduates are well-prepared for the workforce. They could be working elsewhere, and that would be reflected in your median household income, that would be reflected in your poverty rate, so on and so forth. One of the goals, just to foreshadow a little bit, that we've focused in on, it's a foundational goal, again, I drew that distinction earlier between foundational and target sector, inclusion, economic inclusion and participation. We think that that's one way of talking about and coming to terms with the fact that we're seeing both positive indicators and some comparatively negative indicators, because clearly, some people are having very good success in McMinnville's economy and are crafting lives for themselves that they find fruitful and meaningful and healthy, but there are other people, as reflected in the data, who are not, and so maybe it's about bringing the people who aren't achieving that success at this point in time into the fold a little bit better.
Yeah, there's one, I think it was a week and a half ago, MEDP had an opportunity to take some of the students from the high school, and we toured some of the manufacturing sites, and it was amazing to me that some of the very skilled high-school students in the areas that we were visiting, their interest peaked, they talked to the owners, and the owners said, "Yeah, we're looking for those types of things," and so there was a connection made there. Then we brought business owners into the high school to take a look at, you know, the wood shop, the metal shop, and the natural sciences area, and the culinary, and we were able to view the projects that the students were doing, and the employers were looking and saying, "That's what I'm looking for." So, the more I think we can do some of that connection, and some of the grants that may be coming down the road could help that, I think considerably, I think we just need to connect, and we need to partner a little more, we need to tell our story. Sometimes, we just work in a silo, you know, education over here, employers over here, and wait until you're all done, and then you come and see, "Oh, I missed the mark a little bit to be employed in this area." I just thought that was kind of an interesting process to go through, and I enjoyed that immensely.
Mayor, I think that's absolutely the case. I think that we've heard similar things from some of the people that are really deeply involved in those issues, educators, employers, and we hear about successes as well, as you're speaking to, but maybe not at scale, and so part of it is to bring those connections to the fore, to continue to reinforce them, but also to scale the programs that are working well, so that, you know, these students are aware of the opportunities early on enough in their educational lives to take advantage of them and prepare themselves well. And I think that's true at every level of education, you know. I alluded to it before, but there ought to be opportunities, and I think McMinnville's in a good position to provide opportunities for students who choose to get a high-school education, trade school, community college, four-year degree, or higher.
Well, that's what's so exciting about some of this data, is you take the statistical stuff, and you really dive into it and see if you can bring some practical applications and some learnings out of it, and that, to me, is going to be helpful, I think, as we move down the road, is exploring it in our own way to see how we can make it work.
Yeah, absolutely, and it takes on additional meaning, too, of course, with our conversations with the stakeholders in the focus groups. We look at the data beforehand, at least at a cursory level, so that when we go into those conversations, we know where to probe and what to ask, and make sure that we're trying to get at those connections, or where those connections are lacking.
Yeah, I was going to follow up, so to Counsel Peralta's question, I think one of the data points that's concerning to me, so we have the existing conditions, and how do you connect to local students with local employers, right, but we also have a flight happening right now, and the flight is of a certain age group, and it could be an age group that's achieving educational attainment and not coming back. So, is there a hole in terms of our employment opportunities for that particular niche group? Because that, you know, that anomaly sort of screams to us right now, and to me, my question would be, you know, why aren't we able to attract them back, and are there opportunities for McMinnville to do so? And also, we've talked amongst our group of really understanding what the decision-making processes are. How do we survey alumni of the high school, you know, who are twenty-five years old and have made decisions about their professional careers and their locations for their professional careers, as to, you know, what's their background, why did they make the decision, and why not McMinnville, and figure those pieces out?
Thank you.
So, I'll continue here. One of the other additional weaknesses identified by stakeholders was that you're an end-of-the-line location for wine country visitors, so as it relates to capturing some of that traffic, a lot of people might choose to stop in Newburgh or Dundee and not drive the extra fourteen miles, thirteen miles to get to McMinnville. You do apparently have a lack of housing options. Certainly, we know that there are a lack of housing options that are affordable to certain jobs. We also saw in the data from the Census Bureau that you are underrepresented in terms of certain types of housing, and Brian alluded to this as well, right, there are a relative lack of attached housing options, so duplexes, triplexes, small-scale multifamily, like fourplexes, and multifamily housing in general doesn't take up a particularly large percentage of the housing units in McMinnville, so certainly, there's room for more diversity in the housing types available, and maybe some of that diversity provides move-up or move-in options for first-time buyers or people who are otherwise, you know, finding themselves financially burdened with their housing situation. Relatively low levels of professional and office-using employment, which, as we said before, is just beneficial from a standpoint of balance and resiliency, and potentially from a standpoint of wages, and then comparatively high poverty rates and a comparatively low median household income, which we've talked about quite a bit. Opportunities.
I had a question.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Are there any stats on our local airport, on its importance to the community that you put together?
I don't necessarily have data to speak to that. The airport was represented in the focus groups that we did, so we learned quite a bit about what the airport's priorities are strategically speaking, what they think the growth opportunities are, and it seems like, and we've sort of crafted some draft strategies around making the airport as competitive as it can be and leveraging it to the greatest extent possible. I mean, from what I understand, the presence of the instrument landing system and the length of the runway makes it as competitive as any regional airport in the area, and so we think that there's a lot more that can be done with that.
So, this process didn't yield that information, but one of the actions that we're talking about for the strategies is to dive a little bit deeper into the airport and understand, you know, what is the data associated with it and how to leverage it more effectively.
Thank you.
Opportunities, I'm pleased to say that there were many identified in this process. We've got a couple slides here. Proximity to a major metro, obviously, is an opportunity that gives you a chance to capitalize on urban infrastructure. You have a local airport, as was just mentioned, that has comparative advantage over other regional airports. We think there's a lot more that that airport can do, and it seems like you've got some good leadership there that has a bold vision for what the airport can be. The partial completion of the bypass has been nice so far in alleviating some of the traffic and congestion and reducing travel times to Portland, but of course, future completion of the bypass will expand those benefits. We think that there's opportunity for a stronger framework for regional collaboration, another thing that we have discussed a little bit already tonight, and can discuss more as we get into the strategies. Opportunity sites for new downtown development, particularly for new housing development of a variety of types, including potentially higher-density types, so that you can respond proactively to the growth that the forecasts say is coming your way, and improved connections to your four-year public universities, U of O and OSU. Also, stronger branding, and from a physical standpoint, improved gateways into McMinnville, really welcoming people in to create the McMinnville experience, and innovation in agriculture and food systems, agriculture being one of your key industries here regionally. We talked about a lot of very specific investments that could really facilitate innovation in those industries, such as a wine-oriented maker space, a food hub. You've got this large gift to Lynnfield's Wine Program, which will be of tremendous benefit, and that can all expand or serve to help expand your culinary and craft beverage offerings in downtown and throughout the city. You have certainly some recreational assets already, you've got some very fine parks, you've got naturally occurring recreational assets, such as the river, but a lot of folks were pointing toward opportunities to expand your recreational assets, that's improving or increasing park space, creating new trails, maybe better leveraging it in the sense of having more events that bring people into the community, things like that. One thing that came up repeatedly was increased biking, cycling, not just for residents in terms of sort of bike infrastructure, bike lanes or bike racks or something like that, but also from a regional standpoint, sort of tapping into some Travel Oregon initiatives or something like that, that either diversifies your existing visitation base, your existing tourist base through bike tourism, or just provides more regional options for people who are already coming to do that but might be staying elsewhere. You have some key employers in tech-oriented industries that we think you can cluster around, so there are growth opportunities there, companies like TTR and TTCG, Northwest UAV and Northwest Rapid, all are examples of that, and our folks that we've talked to in the focus groups and otherwise that have some really good energy around economic development issues for McMinnville. Increased apprenticeships and similar programs for trade-oriented occupations, telecommuting to jobs in larger metros. It sounds like you've got a lot of the infrastructure in place for that, but there's not necessarily a central hub for it, such as coworking space or something like that, that would facilitate people working in a major metro but continuing to live here and might reduce that burden of choice between moving and staying. And conference space, sort of in the vein of your hospitality industry, was identified repeatedly as an opportunity both for extremely small groups and much larger groups. They think, they being stakeholders who we spoke to, think that there are options there, or opportunities there for improving the provision of conference space to bring more people to town.
A question before you move on from that. The bike tourism conversation, did that come out of assets that we have that put us ahead of other communities for that type of tourism?
I don't know to the extent to which it's asset-based in McMinnville as opposed to the region. I think there are certainly regional assets that you can tap into. There is a scenic bikeway in the Willamette Valley, it doesn't pass through McMinnville, but I think that a number of folks, particularly in our sort of wine and agriculture-focused group, said that, you know, there's a subset of wine tourists who like to do it by bike, you know, and that this is such a scenic area, it's a relatively accessible area in terms of, you know, it's topography, it's fairly flat, I mean, with some limitations, or you go up over Chalum Mountain, it's not flat, but the valley is fairly flat and accessible to people of a wide, you know, range of interests in cycling, and that is a segment that you're not exploiting to the extent that you could be right now. So, the comments about bike tourism, I should also mention, weren't just limited tourism. We received a lot of comments from current residents who would like better bike infrastructure, and so it's more about positioning it as a comprehensive set of initiatives that could make you a more bike-friendly community, increase in quality of life for residents, but also tap into a regional, maybe not network of bike tourism infrastructure, but sort of a regional trend toward increased bike tourism.
Thank you.
Threats, some of these external-focused things are things that, you know, the city's going to have to grapple with moving forward. Limited land availability and regulatory challenges associated with UGB expansion, of course, related issues, but things that will be a challenge, you know, if you're going to have the kind of growth that is projected by the population forecast, you're going to have to determine how you grow and how you can grow well. If you can't grow outward or don't want to grow outward, it often means you have to grow up, and that certainly can affect community character or perceptions of community character, so those are just conversations that are going to have to be had, and it's better to get in front of them so that you're not doing it in a reactionary manner. Housing affordability is a related challenge to those things, and one that we've talked about a little bit already, brain drain due to local graduates leaving for jobs in other metros and/or leaving to go to school elsewhere and then not coming back. We've spoken about that quite a bit as well. Absorption of projected growth without detrimental impacts to character, congestion and affordability being two potential challenges there related with growth. Future oversaturation of wine and tourism, you know, it was interesting to me that, because we work in a lot of communities that have tourism economies, or economies that are at least partially dependent on tourism, and many of them are very wary of tourism, but it's not the people who are working in the tourism industry that are wary of it, right? They're the ones who are employed by that industry. Here, it was the folks who are in the wine industry that were telling us, you know, "We came here because there are excellent opportunities to make world-class wine, but we didn't want to be a monoculture of wine and tourism. We came here because it felt like a real community, and we want it to remain that way." And so, it was very refreshing to hear that it's the wine industry folks, in addition to others, I'm sure, who don't want to just be a wine and tourism economy. We talked about a number of community development challenges that I think are related to economic development or have implications for economic development. One came up was homelessness, because your downtown is such a strong asset, and there are a lot of community services in and around the downtown area. Finding a sustainable solution to homelessness and other related challenges is an economic development issue. And then, we talked quite a bit about resiliency, not just in sort of the broad sectoral way that I've related it thus far, but also in terms of climate change and other challenges to make sure that, you know, you are well-prepared for any potential disasters in the future, to make sure that your infrastructure can withstand those, and you can continue to be a safe and secure community, a productive community, and also in terms of climate change, you know, when you've got a strong agricultural base, understanding how that could potentially affect what can be grown and how well it can be grown, and how that might change your economic drivers over the coming decades. So, that wraps up the summary of the SWOT analysis. Any additional comments or questions?
Not seen any.
I actually had a couple of comments, but it's going to take me a second. No, let's go ahead and move on, sorry.
Okay, happy to come back to it. So, that brings us to the strategic framework. You know, I mentioned at the outset, ours nests within the larger strategic plan, and we're referring to what you're seeing here in our strategic framework as goals and strategies, but I'd say that's sort of one step down the hierarchy from what Brian was referring to. His goals are a little bit broader than what our goals are, and again, we can work on alignment in terms of the terminology, but we've identified eight goals within the economic prosperity focus. Three of those are foundational, five of those are target sector, and they are as follows. One is to grow living wage jobs across a balanced array of industry sectors. Two is to improve economic participation and inclusion. Three is to maintain and enhance our high quality of life, and then, in target sectors, four is to sustain and innovate within traditional industry and advanced manufacturing. Five is to grow employment within technology and entrepreneurship. Six is to be a leader within tourism, retail, restaurants, and hospitality. Seven is to innovate within wine, agriculture, and food systems, and eight is to expand employment and operations within education, medicine, and other sciences. So, that's sort of the highest level of the hierarchy as it pertains to our goals and strategies. Happy to discuss these in as much detail as you'd like, and then we can walk through them one by one to explore some of the strategies that nest underneath them.
Any comments over the broad goals? If not, let's go down to the specifics.
Excellent, and I'll note, of course, it was in your council packet, for the sake of the presentation tonight, whatever we've got right now as working draft actions are even more detailed and are not in this presentation, I believe were in your packet, or were in draft materials that have been delivered to you. Those are very much being workshopped by the advisory committee right now, it's ideas that we've put out there, based on what we've heard, that we think may stick, but again, a work in progress. So, this isn't the extent of the draft strategy, but I think the strategies are at a level right now where it makes sense to be talking about them and to get some feedback on them. So, within grow living wage jobs across- So within grow living wage jobs across a balanced array of industry sectors, we have 1.1, maintain and enhance McMinnville's positive business climate. And 1.2, develop McMinnville's brand and leverage McMinnville's strong sense of place to spur economic growth. Some of the bullets you see underneath those are sort of suggestions of what types of actions might nest underneath. They're not the fully detailed conversations, do this now sort of statements, but they show you what we mean by, for example, maintain and enhance McMinnville's positive business climate. In that case, improve the dialogue between the city and local business community, provide additional tools and resources for business formation and growth. I think we're being cut off a little bit on the right there, but sustain a streamlined permitting and approvals process. And under 1.2, develop McMinnville's brand and leverage a strong sense of place, conduct a formal branding process for the city, reinforce McMinnville's brand identity that you come up with through that process through strategic communications, and communicate McMinnville's sense of place through thoughtful design.
I know in a couple of the nonprofits specifically, Visit McMinnville, they're going through the same type of thing and trying to coordinate this at the same time. So, you know, the city brands itself in a certain way through this strategic process. Those that are supporting us can also build the spokes of the will, so to speak.
Absolutely. And I think it's essential, too. You've also got branding going out at a higher level, right? Travel Oregon has a number of initiatives, one in particular, even a specific logo for the Willamette Valley. So making sure that these branding initiatives are talking to each other is going to be really important. I'll move on. Again, we can come back at any time. This is still within the first goal, living wage jobs across a balanced array of industry sectors. We have 1.3, ensure commercial and industrial land availability. Potential actions including assess land supply for commercial and industrial uses and document lands available for development. That's an area of cross-applicability with the strategic plan, where we're talking about making sure you know what your inventory of available, buildable lands looks like. Communicate then land availability to current prospective businesses, making sure that whether they're businesses that are here that are looking to grow or businesses that you could potentially bring in from outside the community, they're aware of what opportunities are out there. 1.4 is to improve infrastructure to serve businesses, visitors, and local residents, including improvements to external connections between McMinnville and the region, investments and infrastructure improvements that make it safer and easier for residents and visitors to get around McMinnville, and to identify and complete high-priority infrastructure investments that serve McMinnville's current and future business community. And 1.5, which doesn't have action items nested underneath it in this case, is to expand efforts in talent attraction and retention. Those action items are still under development, but it's been clear from our conversations with the business community that they are looking for additional skilled labor, with the skills being determined by the specific industry. So that's an area where we thought there was a strategy that was definitely justified. Moving on to two, we have...
Wait. I think on 1.2, the section where you're dealing with branding, I had a couple of suggestions just for your drafting. One is that I think part of that branding should be focused... I noticed three or four of the focus groups touched on Mack Water and Light and Cheap Power. And I think that the fact that we have such a competitive advantage in energy cost should be a really forward part of the business recruitment strategy. I know Jody is doing that, but I think it should be reflected in this plan. And the second aspect of this that I think we maybe should be thinking about is, I think it's kind of, I think we should be trying to encourage more white-collar employment in the community, but I think that's going to be a heavier lift than some of the other sectors, given the nature of our workforce. And so one of the sections in there, you talked about clustering around TTR, which I don't really see as a clusterable business. I mean, they do tax software for states. But one business that I think might be is the steel mill, and I didn't see that mentioned in here. It's very energy-intensive business and, you know, our third or fourth largest employer. So I suggest maybe thinking about clustering around that type of industrial capacity.
Absolutely, yeah. I think that's a great suggestion. Certainly, certainly that's in line with the goals that we've identified. We have looked at advanced manufacturing as well as traditional industry as a target sector, and we're still in the process of fleshing out these strategies. So we'll go back to the table and make sure that the strategies that we identify within that goal reflect the opportunities to cluster.
It's just a suggestion.
And beyond that, hopefully, you know, within your high-tech employment base, we can find some clustering opportunities. Of course, it might not be in tax preparation software, but, you know, a lot of the skills that go into that, the software development, software engineering and whatnot, may be transferable. So, you know, we've had some conversations last night about what would move the needle for McMinnville on some of these industries, and they aren't all held to the same standard, right? You could have an extra 25 jobs in software development, and that might move the needle in high-tech for McMinnville. But 25 additional jobs in traditional industry might not move the needle because it's already a much larger sector. So the idea behind having the foundational goals and the target sector goals is to come up with something that's comprehensive and mutually reinforcing, right? It's about doing, hopefully, all of it so that we arrive at an agreed-upon vision. So moving on to two, we have improve economic participation and inclusion. 2.1 is to enhance education and workforce development, build career pathways, and provide adult skills training. Some of the ideas we've got there are to work with local businesses to better specify what workforce needs are, and I'd say to better communicate what those workforce needs are once they've been agreed upon and specified. That includes occupations and the skills that they require coming out of different levels of education, to improve access to skill development and education in career pathways at the elementary and secondary levels, sort of mutually reinforcing with that first idea, and to increase the access for McMinnville residents to workforce training and retraining resources at local community and technical colleges, particularly for folks who are going through a career change, looking to do something else at a later point in their life. 2.2 is to provide tools for growing and scaling small entrepreneurial endeavors, which would include connecting businesses with available resources, state and federal levels, even local levels, and to support disadvantaged business enterprises so that there is sort of an equitable approach to business creation or entrepreneurship. And 2.3 is to ensure the adequacy of social services so that there is, and Brian was speaking to this rather eloquently, you know, not just equity of opportunity, but really equitable chances of moving up within life, that there's some social mobility that is accessible to all. The third goal and the last of the foundational goals that we've identified is to maintain and enhance a high quality of life. Again, that's a subjective thing, but we want to make sure that the folks who want to live here can live here, and that's really what it comes down to. So 3.1 is to provide a sufficient quantity of housing units that suit local wages and workforce needs, including ensuring that regulatory frameworks and land supply align with market-driven housing needs. That was in Brian's presentation. And to collaborate to improve the financial feasibility of housing development and new home purchases, also in Brian's presentation. Clear overlap there between the larger strategic planning process and what we're doing, but just goes to reinforce, I think, how important housing is from an economic development standpoint as well as from a community development and livability standpoint. And then 3.2 is to expand recreation options. I plucked this long action step out to show you the diversity of specific suggestions that we were getting from folks, and I bolded some of them that we have heard. You know, we may craft this a little bit more strategically in the final plan, but we got a lot of input about recreation opportunities in McMinnville, and you see some of them there. A paved trail or path along the river, fitness equipment along the Hewlett-Packard Trail, various improvements suggested to Joe Dancer Park, better river access, a pump track for BMX bikes, and extension of the West Side Bicycle and Pedestrian Greenway, among others. And again, I'd say, you know, those are quality-of-life amenities explicitly, which is a really good thing for the people that already live here, and that should not be discounted. But those also have economic development implications because as companies increasingly seek to find talented individuals, and talented individuals make choices about where they're going to work based on where they want to live, you want to be a place where people want to live. But also because companies themselves already have employees that they're considering relocating, and they increasingly make choices about where they're going to locate their business based on where they think their employees are going to want to live. So it's all sort of a virtuous cycle there, and we do see these quality-of-life amenities as economic development assets. Furthermore, in three, we have 3.3, leverage museums and other cultural amenities. 3.4, invest in McMinnville's neighborhoods. We had some conversations last night about that and what invest means. We're really talking about just taking the time to create frameworks for neighborhood improvements so that your neighborhoods remain livable places. Again, sort of along the same lines as what I was just saying in terms of quality-of-life amenities being economic development assets. 3.5, to embrace proactive approaches to maintaining McMinnville's character. And 3.6, become a regional leader in cross-jurisdiction collaboration and problem-solving. We've talked a little bit tonight about the regional perspective. We see McMinnville as a natural fit for leadership roles in that regional collaborative framework. So barring any comments at that point, we're moving into target sector goals and strategies. Goal four is to sustain and innovate within traditional industry and advanced manufacturing, which includes at this point, 4.1, ensure workforce availability in trades. I referenced that earlier. A lot of folks who own or operate businesses that rely on trades employment described it as being at crisis levels in terms of workforce availability. 4.2 is to facilitate innovation within traditional industry sectors. And 4.3 is to expand and market land availability for industrial activities. And I'd even say, you know, that may be applicable to other commercial opportunities that are not explicitly industrial as well. Make sure that you know what your commercial and industrial lands are, and then go and market them appropriately to the right types of businesses. Five is to grow employment within technology and entrepreneurship. 5.1 is to become a place where small and medium technology firms can relocate and want to relocate. 5.2 is to provide opportunities for coworking, teleworking, and other arrangements enabled by telecommunications technology. That could be as easy as, and we've talked to folks in our public forums already who want to do this and currently don't feel like they're able, to have a job somewhere else. In this case, it was Portland, but to live here. They want to live here. And right now, the burden of the commute is tremendous. But if they could just reduce that commute from five days to three by virtue of working at a space with the appropriate infrastructure, that'd be a major quality-of-life improvement for them, and they felt like, in this particular conversation, other people would be more willing to do that as well. 5.3 is to incubate new businesses and startups. And 5.4 is to create new talent pipelines for tech-related occupations. So that's more on the workforce side for tech-oriented industries.
Can I ask a quick question here?
Of course.
So we have talked about collaboration with other jurisdictions, but they're also within McMinnville. Back to the comment that we saw previously in the strategic plan about us identifying what our role is as compared to roles of like, say, you know, MEDP or, you know, other partners in the community. Right now, they're pretty broad, where they might encompass something that we would do, but then also something that others of our partners would do. At some, at a certain point, are we going to get down to where it's really clear the distinction of what the city's going to do to move towards that?
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's the detail, the next level down that we aren't seeing here, right?
Yes, it is. So the next level down, we typically refer to as actions, for lack of a better term, right? They're the things that we think you can jump in on right away or in the very near future and have real concrete nature to them. But for all strategies and all actions, in the way we produce these planning documents, we identify lead actors, supporting actors or partners, as well as hopefully taking a stab at the resources needed, or at least an order of magnitude sort of level of resources needed. You know, this is a high-cost item, this is a low-cost item, so that you can start to prioritize what might generate quicker wins than others, what you have the resources to go after now. So that's all supporting information that we're in the process of producing right now.
Great. Okay. Awesome. Thanks.
The sixth goal that we've identified is to be a leader in tourism, retail, restaurants, and hospitality. And really, this involves also diversifying within those industries. You know, 6.1 is to make downtown the best that it can be. 6.2 is to become the preferred destination for wine-related tourism. And I think that, you know, you are already a preferred destination, but becoming the preferred destination is something that is still an opportunity for you. 6.3 is to diversify tourism destinations then beyond wine, and maybe that's recreation or other leisure activities, or just by virtue of the assets here within town, the strength of your downtown. 6.4 is to encourage connections to the local food system and cultivate a community of exceptional restaurants. And 6.5 is to market and promote McMinnville. There is some cross-pollination with six and seven, because six is more sort of on the consumer-facing side of things, but seven is more on the producer-facing side of things. We're saying that you should innovate within wine, agriculture, and food systems, and that includes 7.1, to maintain prominence in wine while looking for opportunities to innovate within supply chains, viticulture, and production. 7.2 is to locate higher job-density activities within your city boundaries, to try to find within those industries that are occurring regionally what actually generates the most jobs per acre or per square foot, to actively try to get those here in town. 7.3 is to expand R&amp;D for wine and other agricultural or cultivation-oriented and value-added practices. 7.4 is to open new markets for local agricultural products. And 7.5 is to preserve natural assets while ensuring long-term stability in agricultural production.
Elliot, a question on 7.2, locate higher job-density activities in McMinnville. Is there a average or a mean of jobs per acre that we might be looking towards to maximize that, given the lack of land inventory?
Yeah, I think it requires some further study, and I know that Heather and I have had some conversations about whether or not your industrial lands more broadly. And even though this is about wine, agriculture, and food systems, a lot of that production-oriented work takes place on your industrial lands, or questions about whether or not your industrial lands are meeting the job densities that you have projected. So I think, you know, that's not something we've done a deep dive on as part of this study, and maybe a recommendation that comes out of this study to really drill down on that. But you'd want to find out what is generating the highest employment per acre and then proactively recruit that.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I can follow up. We have an adopted economic opportunity analysis in it. There is a policy of striving to achieve 11 jobs per acre on our employment lands.
Okay.
There is a action recommended in this particular draft to go back and see what's working, what's not working in terms of the assumptions of the economic opportunity analysis, and that may be one of the things we look at, higher or lower.
Absolutely, because I know we've had some discussion around that of trying to hit a certain standard and how we can focus towards that and enable that.
Could I ask a question? How do you factor in, right now, we've got some, a pretty strong construction industry in McMinnville, and there's a lot of workers that come in from out of town regionally. There's a lot of workers here, but there's a lot that come in from out of town. How do you factor in something like that as far as its impact on the community? What is that an industry by itself, or does it contribute to other industries? What's your experience with that?
Well, certainly both. I mean, you can look at it as an industry unto itself. There's data available on it as a discrete industry, but it also contributes to other industries. In this case, we had, I would say, representatives, at least loosely speaking, of the construction industry in one of our focus groups, and it was the one that was focused on traditional industry. So I think their perspectives were fairly well-represented. But it's entirely possible that we've not given due coverage to the construction industry in the strategy development portion of this, and if so, we're entirely open to adding some language to that effect. I didn't hear any strategies explicitly coming out of the focus groups about what we could do to improve the prospects for the construction industry in McMinnville, but again, that conversation's ongoing, so.
There was some discussion last night about actually training, better training options for construction groups.
Yeah, absolutely.
Again, the trades-type jobs.
Right.
I would like to just suggest that you add healthcare industry into the target sectors that you establish some goals for.
It's coming up next.
Okay. Sorry.
Happy to report that that is done. Just did it. But noted on the construction front, I think, you know, we spoke to folks who are looking for a lot of the same trade-oriented skill sets, but within the construction industry. And so I think that certainly from a workforce standpoint, a lot of what is in the draft plan will aid the construction industry, even if it doesn't have the word "construction" in it. You know, they're hard answers. You know, there there are hard and soft skills that will benefit a wide variety of industries, including construction, that we think we can target really specifically within this plan.
As we as we move towards more affordable housing and more housing units in general in all economic levels, that construction component really becomes a big factor, in my opinion, without any data to back it up. But it certainly is an industry that's recognizable. One of the things that's inconsistent is that they, the regional workers who come here, leave again. A lot of times, they do spend money here, and some of them actually settle here if the construction is a long duration and they like the community. So I don't know. I guess it's a question without an answer, is what kind of effect it has on us and what we should do about it.
Yeah, well, I think that there are some, again, I think the the lens that I've heard most clearly to view this through from the folks that we have talked to is a workforce lens, because that sort of takes out the question of where those workers end up living, whether they're living in Newburgh or McMinnville or Willamina. You know, they're working regionally, and they have to work on projects regionally because McMinnville is not going to grow enough, back to the land constraints, right, to to keep a workforce in construction employed only on projects in McMinnville. They're going to have to work regionally. So, you know, you find people, give them the skills such that they can find jobs within construction, and that they can work regionally on construction projects, and that if demand shifts or if growth slows, they've got transferable skills. So we've seen in other parts of the country innovative programs that sort of tie some of these issues together, programs where maybe you're you're training individuals in some of these hard skills, construction-oriented skills, on demonstration projects for new, not-yet-market-supported housing types that might also be affordable to some of the folks, right? So do something innovative on the housing side, and in doing so, get the partners in line so that they're using a workforce that's not yet trained, but they're training them on the job. And you can kind of, you know, get a couple of these things, a couple of these balls rolling at once, make inroads toward multiple goals at the same time.
Yeah, it's, we're talking about better-than-entry-level salaries for skilled people. In fact, double or triple entry-level salaries if if they can stay consistent on their work and if if work is is to be found in this area. So those who can be successful in construction can contribute to the economy in a much broader sense if they if they settle here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so it's something that we should, I think we should give special thought to. And it also affects the supplier of materials, too. If you have a construction growth that's strong, it affects suppliers and delivery people also.
Absolutely. Yeah, there's a multiplier effect.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So without further ado, we have healthcare, also education and other sciences. You know, this is your eds and meds cluster, as it's sometimes referred to. I think there's more that we can do here, so we welcome any and all suggestions. But we did have some folks from different educational institutions represented in our focus groups, and we think that, you know, eight, we've we've tentatively landed on expand employment in operations and education, medicine, and other sciences, with eight point one, leverage Lynnfield College and Chomecketa Community College. Eight point two, encourage growth at the Willamette Valley Medical Center. And eight point three, explore increased roles, local roles rather, for Oregon's public universities.
I do think the healthcare issue is broader than just the Willamette Medical Center. I think there's there's a large and growing population that is going to need a broader array of healthcare services. And that's going to be an area where we can have higher-wage jobs that match to a kind of a lower education workforce.
Absolutely, yeah. I think you're you're absolutely right there. One of the actions that we have discussed under eight point two is to try to encourage some clustering and spinoffs around the medical centers, to find the professional office, the medical services stuff that's maybe not under the direct control of the medical center, but that likes to locate near healthcare anchors and and to encourage, you know, that to locate here as well. Makes sense, and there's an increasing movement toward locating all these things within at least an easy drive, if not a walking distance of each other, so that when you leave your primary care provider at the medical center and need to go see a specialist that's privately run, you walk across the street. So that's something that, you know, McMinnville's got an opportunity to do, and not just for the city, but for the region, since the medical center is a regional anchor.
Yeah, if I could just say something on that, Sal, there's, the medical center here in McMinnville is expanding out into the healthcare assisted assisted living and what's the other word for?
Hospice?
Not so much. Well, that's that's still here, but.
The urgent care, there's lots of that.
All that, for for old folks. They're actually just starting to get into it, and we may see some significant growth in that if they stay with it, because they haven't been involved in assisted living. Thank you. Is that what you said?
No, I remember the care.
Assisted living. It covers a lot of areas, but that's expanding, and it's probably going to be an important factor as we go along.
Yeah, I agree absolutely. And, you know, a nurse with a two-year degree can make a pretty good wage, even as, you know, entry-level positions, medical assistants can make a decent wage. And oftentimes, medical assistants have good opportunities to move up throughout their career as well. So there's a whole constellation of occupations within healthcare that, you know, aren't paying 90th percentile wages at the beginning, but give you growth opportunities throughout your career and give you at least a good starting point within your career as well. So, as well as providing community services, right? That's that's one of the flip sides to education and medicine that makes it a double whammy of sorts from an economic development standpoint, is that you're you're getting community services that make you more livable, which feed into that virtuous cycle we were talking about earlier, where if you're a place that people want to live, you're also probably a place that companies want to locate.
I have one more thought on Alan's comment about the construction industry, because I had a thought about one of, I'm surprised it hasn't come up, but one of the strengths that we have as a community is that we have strong local builders that, and we have not been visited by the national builders that that put together neighborhoods that are not necessarily conducive to the quality of neighborhoods that we're used to here. So it might, I would like to see something within this that does address that, because a lot of the things that we're talking about doing really hinge on keeping that industry strong here locally. And so anyway, just to support Alan's comment, that's one of the strengths that we have as a community that I think isn't really represented in here, is the strength of our local building economy and what we could do to continue to support that as we're putting more demands on them to create these great neighborhoods and to create more affordable housing. And with this constrained land, there is a lot of pressure on the builders, the local builders. So anyway, I I don't know specifically how I'd like to see it represented, but that might be something to bring back up for discussion. And you said that there's a representative from the construction industry in the group?
Yeah, in our focus groups.
In your focus group?
Absolutely. Point well taken. I think that there's room for some strategies around the construction industry more explicitly than what we've done here, and it sounds like a really important part of the economy.
Okay.
I will say to follow up on that, in the housing work group, we had some discussion, and we had a, with Brian. I was thinking we had a builder, with Brian Rudin as part of that group. We talked about the need to create a succession plan for our local builder community, to have mentorship programs and to help sort of young developers and builders get into the industry here locally, so that we can have that second-generation, third-generation effect occurring.
Great, good.
If I could just keep going on.
Yeah, please.
Everybody awake out there? So I think that you're probably alluding to the D.R. Hortons of the world coming in.
I didn't say the name, though.
Well, I did. Everybody knows that one. So anyway, if we don't fill the void of the needs of our community locally, then we can figure the the bigger national and regional builders will come in and fill that need, and and it won't quite be the same for our community.
And one of the challenges in the construction industry as a whole is that there are not, to Heather's point, I'm glad that that was a part of the discussion, that there, it is not a given that there are, there is leadership coming up that will fill that void of local builders. It's really going a lot more to the national builders, and and our local builders have actually made a concerted effort to keep the building local because they care about the communities and they aren't putting up. So, I mean, I do think that needs to be a targeted thing, that we make sure we preserve that strength of that that industry.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. So that gets us through all eight goals. I'm happy to go back to any of them as needed to facilitate further discussion, happy to take any additional direction from any of you. But aside from that, the only slide I have left here just says, "Thank you."
So let's stop for a moment, and any thoughts that have come to you in our discussion tonight as it, we're looking at the economic piece? A number of those, we've given some ideas and some direction from the council, but I'll just start down with Adam. Any any additional thoughts that you have for Elliot to take back?
No, not really. I think it's been well put together, and you covered all the bases. And from what I've heard from citizens since being elected and even before elected and while serving on the chamber board, I think you hit a broad spectrum, and I like what I've seen.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's very comprehensive, and I appreciate the work that you and our our planning staff has put into developing this. The one comment that I'd make, or one additional comment, is that it seems to me, and this is more for the council than for for you, but it seems to me that, from the data, people are moving here to raise families. You have a lot of people in their 30s with kids that come here for the schools. So it seems to me that in our budgeting, maybe going forward, we think about prioritizing the amenities that families want. So I think that that's something to consider. Or moving here to retire, which is one of the reasons why I really kind of focused on the healthcare industry, because as we have an aging population, that will be a growth sector that that we need to focus on. And then, third, I really feel like we have under-leveraged the huge competitive advantage we have with cheap electricity. And I'm not exactly sure, given the constraints with land inventory that we have, how we can best leverage that as a community. But it seems to me that one thing that I would have liked to have seen in in here, I guess we did have it in here, but but the leveraging that cheap electricity for the purpose of bringing in manufacturing, light manufacturing, although the constraint there seems to be the workforce. And how we how we tackle that going forward with the school district in Chomecketa is, I'm not sure, but that that was a very troubling and surprising statistic to me, was that, given our high high school graduation rates, that people are still having such a hard time finding workers.
True.
Kelly?
This was a good presentation, much easier to view tonight than last night, but.
I worked on that today.
I particularly enjoyed it. I guess my only add would be, that came up in discussion last night, was the fiber-optic backbone. We don't really advertise that as an asset, per se. And I know there's a lot of issues around it, but I still think it should be added to the mix, just as a thought.
Great, thank you.
Let's jump down to Alan.
A lot of what you said really rings true, because we've been talking about it a lot, and it's comfortable, and it's feels like user-friendly, right? Because we've heard all this, not in such an organized forum with with everybody working as a team with you. So it's good to hear it all put together, and it makes sense. And we know we have ways to go, piece by piece, so looks good for the future. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Hopefully, we can inject some creative solutions into it, too.
I I want to give you kudos also for last night. I felt like you really were able to bring out some great discussion, and I hope that we're able to capture some of those ideas that came up. I was blown away by some of the the ideas that came out in that group discussion afterwards, and I haven't been a part of all of them, but clearly, there's been many, many great discussions in the community. So I think you've captured it really well. So Elliot, thank you for all the work you've done. It really shows.
We've, thank you. We've gotten a lot of really good input, and I know that at least a couple members of our advisory committee here tonight, and they've done a great job. So every month, we're meeting with them, and I think every month, we we push the content further and further. So they're doing a great job.
Cool.
This is probably as much for the council, but from my perspective, I'm just amazed at the amount of time and effort that's been placed into this process, not only through, and I don't minimize this, through the city, employees and staff and the council, but just truly citizens that have engaged themselves and thought outside the box and have been, as we say, have enough courage to speak what they feel is on their mind. You know, I have not seen this kind of a dialogue in the going on 14 years of, I mean, we've gone out to the community, but not in this way. And so, you know, we're going to come back with a lot of information, a lot of data, and then it behooves us to then put our input into it to help finalize what that's going to look like. We've got to realize that we've put a lot of effort into gathering information and direction and input, but now we have to refine it. And it puts a lot back on us, and all the time, the effort and money that's been spent is only as good as we refine this information and then build a a direction that can take us, you know, 15, 20, 25 years down the road. And then it behooves us then on an annual basis then to implement. And we do this thoughtfully and not all at once. And and we are very respective of resources, because resources are going to drive this this process. And, you know, I was looking at that one with our city services. I think it was one of the the values of city services, and we talked a little bit about that, and Susan gave us some input. But I think we also have to realize that we have limited resources that also keep city services and our city employees within a confined area. And sometimes, if we don't keep the resources and expenses piece together, because that's another piece that we're responsible for as a budget entity, is really important. So I just look forward to, you know, the next couple of months as we refine and come up with a more detailed plan. But again, we're going to be the entity that really drives this to the next level. And so, you know, being attentive and putting in that little extra time and really thinking globally and outside of our boxes is going to help us, I think, deliver, not only have a great plan that other communities can look at and say, "Boy, McMinnville did," just like they normally do in every other thing, "an excellent job." But then, we've got to be able to have the foresight and the ability to keep that legacy inherited, which we have inherited from past leaders, so that we have something to look forward to. So those are my thoughts. A lot more put on us, but just thankful for being in the community that cares so much. Jeff, any thoughts from your perspective?
So a couple of things that are interesting to me that I think will emerge as we get further into the economic work as well, but also the housing, is, you know, listening to some of the comments about being able to maintain and strengthen and protect the character of the community and recognize some of the local business and industry that we have that's contributed to the community. I think there's going to be some inherent conflict, because given our land constraints and the changing scope of the economy, the kind of development that we may be faced with in this community will be different than we have now. And while we have a skilled cadre of residential developers in the community, I don't know that we have a lot of folks that have built a lot of. a lot of high-end multifamily dwelling or mixed-use residential commercial development. We haven't done a lot of redevelopment. We haven't really pushed density and upward growth. And I think all of those are going to be dynamics that are driven partly by our land supply and partly by the kind of housing and jobs that will come available to us. And so the tension is, well, how do you bring these different methods of construction? How do you bring these different types and aggregations of construction? How do you bring together investors and businesses that are willing to take on a more expensive type of development or redevelopment, be more patient about a longer-term return on the investment, and still have character in the community? And so I think there's still some tension yet to come as this plan gets worked out and we start to look at implementation strategies. So feels like a lot of kumbaya right now, but I do think there's going to be an opportunity for healthy debate and, you know, figuring out how we're going to do this, and which ways are we going to go.
Well said, Jeff. Well, go ahead, Ann.
On number seven, I was just curious with agriculture and wine, if cannabis tourism had blossomed up in any conversations or anything with how much that's grown in the Oregon economy in the last couple of years? And the, I don't know, I think last year it had a $1.2 billion economic impact in the state.
Yeah, thank you. It was, I would say, conspicuously absent in our focus group conversations, maybe surprisingly so. But it's a conversation we're starting to have now with the advisory committee, because we think that one way or another, you know, the impact or potential impact is big enough that the plan ought to address it, define an approach to it. So I think that's an area we're still working, but it's one that we've identified as a place that we need to address.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I had a comment for the good of the order, not on the plan. Is this an appropriate time, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay. I got an email today from the Friends of the Yamhallas West Sider Trail asking for our council's support for their regional trail. I noticed that in tonight's presentation, a lot of the items that were mentioned that Yamhallas West Sider Trail hits those checkboxes. It improves both the recreational infrastructure regionally, but it also preserves the rights-of-way for future rail infrastructure. We've already lost a lot of rail infrastructure in the county because those have not been preserved. And so at a future council meeting, I think we should consider offering our support for that trail.
And from my perspective, I think we probably need to have a little more information come to us.
Maybe we could ask them to.
And come in and do a presentation and see if that's something that we could be behind, because I think it's, there's a split in the county a little bit right now. And I'd really like to hear both sides do their presentation and give us the full picture.
I think that's a good idea. I don't think there's a big split in the county. I think there's a small group against and a big.
So those would be the things to kind of get a sense of?
Yeah. I'll let them know.
Okay. Any other? Elliot, thank you. Again, thank department heads and Mark and others that are here, all that are here. So again, thank you, and we will go ahead and close our special work session.
Thank you all, appreciate it.